Buenas tardes, gracias por venir esta noche para ver los peligros de terremoto que tenemos aquí en Malibu y para hablar de lo que estamos haciendo para prepararnos y también ayudarlos a saber qué tienen que hacer para prepararse. Esta es una parte del esfuerzo anual que estamos haciendo. Estamos haciendo una iniciativa de resiliencia por terremoto antes de este mes. No sé cuántos de ustedes vieron la reunión del Consejo de la Ciudad pero tuvimos a Dr. Lucy Jones, muchos de ustedes pueden saber quién es. Ella es una geóloga muy famosa que ha trabajado con Caltech. Ella vinieron y dio una presentación al Consejo de la Ciudad y eso comenzó toda nuestra iniciativa de resiliencia por terremoto. Y voy a hablar un poco más sobre eso, un poco más allá de la presentación. Pero este es nuestro primer evento de comunidad como parte de esta iniciativa, así que muchas gracias por estar aquí. Mi nombre es Susan Duñez, soy la administradora de seguridad pública para la ciudad de Malibu. Y solo quiero señalar que tenemos a un miembro del Consejo, Jefferson Wagner, aquí algún lugar. ¿O se salió de ahí? Está aquí, así que estamos muy afortunados de tener a uno de nuestros miembros del Consejo aquí también. He estado con la ciudad casi un año, comenzó el año pasado en abril, pero he estado en el negocio de gestión de emergencias por al menos 25 años. Mi primer desastre, así que se refiere, fue los disturbios en Los Ángeles. Y desde entonces he estado en terremotos, aviones que chocan, trenes que chocan, ataques terroristas, muchos, muchos incendios, deslizamientos. Lo único que realmente no he lidiado con son los tornados y los huracanes. Pero estoy bien, voy a seguir con lo que he hecho hasta ahora. Así que con suerte, estoy feliz de que al menos estoy capaz de traer toda esa experiencia aquí para servir a Malibu. Así que sin decir demasiado más, quiero darles una breve revisión de lo que vamos a hablar esta noche. Vamos a hablar de los peligros de terremoto que afectan a Malibu, el posible impacto en Malibu. Y luego vamos a hablar un poco sobre algunas de las cosas que el estado de California está haciendo para prepararse y luego de qué está haciendo la ciudad de Malibu para prepararse y luego hablaremos de lo que pueden hacer para prepararse. Y en cuanto a preguntas, pueden hacerlas, si tienen una pregunta, adelante y levanten la mano y podemos abordar las preguntas de inmediato. Si empezamos a recibir muchas preguntas, podemos tener que cortarlas y decir, esperemos hasta el final porque queremos ser capaces de pasar por toda la presentación de manera ondulada. Y esto está siendo filmado, así que hay gente en casa, en su habitación, viendo también, así que queremos tratar de pasar por ello. Pero definitivamente, por favor, freír la mano si tienen una pregunta durante la presentación. Bien, así que para empezar, voy a presentar a Chris Dean. Él es el geólogo consultor de la ciudad de Malibu. Tiene un título de máster en geología que obtuvo de la Universidad Texas A&amp;M. Ha estado con Malibu desde 1994, así que este tipo realmente conoce Malibu. Así que con eso, les presento a Chris Dean.
Gracias por venir, todos. Gracias por venir. Bueno, la primera pregunta, y creo que mucha gente ya sabe que somos un país de terremoto aquí en el sur de California. Entonces, ¿cuál es exactamente nuestro riesgo de terremoto? La diapositiva que estamos mostrando aquí es simplemente una mapa regional de todas las fallas en el sur de California. Y como probablemente ya saben, hay muchas fallas. La falla principal que va de la parte sur de la ciudad hasta San Francisco es la Falla San Andreas, que es una falla de desplazamiento de golpes. Y eso separa la Plata América del Norte de la Plata Pacífica. Es una falla de desplazamiento en que si estás hacia la Plata América del Norte, estando en Los Ángeles, Los Ángeles está gradualmente, lentamente moviéndose hacia el norte hacia San Francisco. La Falla San Andreas ha sido estudiada extensivamente y es el resultado de una curva en la Falla San Andreas, justo en el medio de la área de California Sur que ha causado compresión y ha rotado los rango de montaña de una dirección predominante de norte, oeste, oeste hacia sur hacia una dirección oriental, y eso ha causado mucho compresión y creó muchos fallas que básicamente van hacia este, oeste, a través de todo el sur de California. Estudios han revelado en la Falla San Andreas que en promedio la falla se rompe cada 160 años. Y el último gran terremoto en la Falla San Andreas ocurrió en 1857 en Fort Tahoma, que está ubicado aproximadamente aquí. La falla fue una terremoto de magnitud 7.9, lo que causó extenso daño. Y la zona de ruptura real extendió por aproximadamente 225 millas de Parkfield hasta Wrightwood. Estamos llegados. Creo que todo el mundo sabe eso. Se escucha eso a través del Centro de Terremotos de California Sur, Lucy Jones, está en los periódicos todos los días. Así que estamos llegados. Tan pronto como me moviera, toda la ciudad de Malibu, desafortunadamente, tiene la Falla de la costa de Malibu que se mueve hacia este, oeste, a lo largo de su longitud de 21 millas. Este es un zoom en de ese mapa que muestra un poco más de detalle de la Falla de la costa de Malibu, que es la falla más landward. La Falla Santa Monica, que está en la costa, y la Falla de Anacapodun. Esas dos fallas en la costa han mostrado históricamente más actividad que la falla en la frente de las montañas. Y... Podemos zoomar un poco más. En 1994, el estado de California, la California Geological Survey, y Jerry Triman hicieron un estudio extenso a lo largo de toda la ciudad sobre la Falla de la costa de Malibu y publicaron un informe de evaluación de la falla, que es el número 229, que está disponible en su sitio web, que fue una acumulación de mapeo regional por la National State Geological Survey y también estudios site específicos, que están indicados en la diapositiva por todos estos números aquí. Así que el estado hizo mucha investigación a través de todas las jurisdicciones, incluyendo Malibu, en estudios que fueron realizados por geólogos mirando las diferentes ramas de la Falla de la costa de Malibu. Y esta es la mapa guía, serie de mapas que usamos en la ciudad que los consultores tienen que abordar con respecto al potencial de ruptura de la falla cuando realizan investigaciones de site para nuevas estructuras habitables. Así que tenemos bastante detalle, y lo trataré un poco más tarde. La Falla de la costa de Malibu es capaz de una magnitud de 7 a 7.2 terremoto. Y como mencioné antes, las fallas en la costa son más susceptibles y más activas que las fallas en la costa. Entonces, ¿qué puede pasar durante un terremoto en Malibu? Bueno, todos sabemos que tenemos cortes de carretera altos en el terrofer de la autopista Pacífico de este, oeste, oeste así como en todas nuestras carreteras canyon, namely, Malibu Canyon, Canaan, Doom Road, Encinal Canyon, y Decker Canyon. Tenemos muchos cortes de carretera altos que fueron cortados cuando las carreteras fueron construidas y también tenemos muchos deslizamientos de tierra mapeados en esas áreas. Así que obviamente, tanto las casas como las carreteras van a ser susceptibles de inestabilidad de la inclinación y de deslizamientos de rocas durante un terremoto, especialmente durante la temporada lluviosa cuando tenemos tierras saturadas porque todos sabemos que cuando llueve mucho y obtenemos tierras saturadas a menudo hay reactivación de algunos de los deslizamientos que tenemos que lidiar con y tenemos que proporcionar servicios de respuesta emergente a la ciudad. Como nota adicional, Malibu tiene tres distritos de evaluación de deslizamientos que fueron establecidos hace unos 20 a 30 años en tres deslizamientos activos: el deslizamiento Big Rock Mesa en la parte oriental de la ciudad, el deslizamiento Kai Debarko en la vecindad de La Costa, así como la parte occidental de la carretera de Malibu. Estos distritos de evaluación fueron desarrollados y creados para monitorear y deshacer los deslizamientos para ayudar a reducir o bajar el nivel del agua y, por lo tanto, aumentar la estabilidad de los deslizamientos. Y si lo piensan, al hacer eso, con suerte, durante un terremoto, el aumento de la estabilidad de esos grandes deslizamientos que tienen muchas casas en ellos va a reducir los efectos de un terremoto en esos deslizamientos para la reactivación. Esa es la esperanza. La ciudad monitorea esos y proporciona un reporte anual de monitoreo para cada distrito, que están disponibles en el sitio web, y vamos a pasar por todos esos recursos para ustedes un poco más tarde.
Así que esto es lo que parece cuando vas a MyHazards, es CalOES MyHazards. Y lo que hacen es aquí, acabo de ingresar el código ZIP 90265, y luego digo entrar. Trae a Malibu, y luego aquí puedes preguntar qué peligro quieres mirar. Así que voy a mirar tsunami, y es difícil de decir, pero tienen una línea de inundación que va a lo largo de toda la costa. Pero si te zoomas, puedes obtener un poco mejor vista. Pero quería entrar aquí porque con el terremoto reciente en Alaska y había mucho preocupación porque había una advertencia de tsunami que se lanzó y algunas personas se confundieron y pensaron que la advertencia aplicaba a Malibu también. De hecho, no lo hizo, era un watch. La advertencia era para Alaska y Canadá. No había realmente ningún tipo de amenaza que pudieran ver para Malibu. Pero de todos modos, quiero que sepan que si hay una advertencia o un consejo para estar familiarizados con la mapa de inundación, para que puedan realmente ver lo que estamos hablando. Así que esto es lo que ellos piensan que es la inundación máxima, y como pueden ver, es minimal. Estamos hablando de la playa, así que la amenaza principal es si es un día soleado y tenemos una playa agitada. Sería como una gran onda de locura. Pero cuando vas un poco más allá de la costa, llegando más cerca de donde estamos aquí en este momento, pueden ver que tenemos un poco más de un problema aquí. Así que esta área es parte de la zona de inundación. Pero aparte de eso, pueden ver que la amenaza de tsunami para Malibu de hecho no es tan grave. He trabajado en otras jurisdicciones donde era mucho peor. Así que cuando vi esto, estaba un poco relajada. Yo solía trabajar para la ciudad de Oxnard allí. Tienen un peligro de tsunami mucho mayor allí. Así que esto no es muy malo, pero significa que si estás en la playa y hay un fuerte terremoto, yo recomendaría que se levante, comience a caminar en el interior mientras comience a ver los noticias para ver si hay algo que necesiten preocuparse. Así que ese es el sitio web de MyHazards, y pueden ver otros peligros también. Pero pensé que era bueno mostrarles la zona de inundación de tsunami y además también familiarizarlos con el sitio web de MyHazards. Así que esta es otra cosa que quería destacar, y no pueden leerlo muy bien, pero tengo hojas de cinta que están ahí fuera para que ustedes tomen porque con la advertencia de tsunami que salió ayer que algunas personas encontraron confusos, solo quería pasar por qué diferentes watches y advertencias y qué eso significa. Así que esto es directo del centro de advertencia de tsunami, y esto es lo que dicen. Y es difícil de leer aquí, pero si tienen la hoja de cinta pueden verlo. Así que comienza con un watch de tsunami, que es el nivel más bajo. Y eso es solo si ha habido un terremoto, a veces, a temprano ponen esto hacia áreas más allá mientras analizan toda la situación. Lo envían a un gerente de emergencia, así que personas como yo. Está viniendo del centro de advertencia de tsunami, yendo al Office de Emergencia de la Cámara de la Cisla y su oficero de duty, que está en duty 24/7, tienen alguien allí. Entonces, relatan la información a los gobiernos locales. Y ese es el nivel más bajo. Ahora, si de hecho hay algo, un tsunami potencial, entonces vas a obtener un consejo. Y esto se issue debido a la amenaza de un tsunami que podría producir corrientes fuertes. Y normalmente están hablando de uno que llega a tres pies. Así que si está en un nivel de watch, estamos hablando de pulgadas. Así que eso es solo como una onda de locura. No es nada que va a amenazar a nadie. Pero cuando estás en el nivel de consejo, estás hablando de uno a tres pies por encima del nivel medio del mar. Así que eso va a depender de si estamos en alto tide, si estamos ya en una tormenta donde tenemos un poco de tormenta surgiendo sobre el alto tide. Así que va a depender, pero estamos hablando de uno a tres pies por encima del nivel medio del mar cuando escuchas consejo aquí en Malibu, ¿ok? Así que esto es específico a Malibu, esto es directo de nuestro libro de juego de tsunami. Si llegas a la advertencia, entonces estás hablando de una amenaza inminente de un tsunami que es mayor que tres pies. Así que eso es tres pies por encima del nivel medio del mar. Así que todavía no es enorme, no es como en Japón, los pies por encima del nivel medio, creo que fue 127 pies. Así que pueden ver, nuestro riesgo relativo es bastante bajo. No significa que no haya daños, no significa que la gente no pueda resultar herida porque sabemos que incluso las ondas del océano pueden causar que la gente resulte herida. Así que todavía es algo que debemos estar al tanto, todavía es algo que quieres salir de la way. Pero es una amenaza menor que algunas otras áreas, especialmente en el mundo. Así que de nuevo, el watch es muy bajo nivel, no hay peligro en este momento, pero se supone que deben prestar atención. Si es consejo, entonces estás hablando de uno a tres pies por encima del nivel medio del mar. Y la advertencia es tres pies y más, ¿ok? Este uno, de nuevo, no podrán verlo, hay una hoja de cinta ahí fuera. Pero lo que detalla, estos son resultados del modelo de escenario de fuente de tsunami que han hecho para darnos, es un guía para darnos una idea general. Ahora, no pueden realmente verlo bien aquí, pero si obtienes la hoja de cinta puedes verlo. Listan todos estos terremotos, mi cosa no funciona. En el lado izquierdo, listan todas las diferentes fuentes de tsunami. Algunos de ellos provienen de fallas terremoto locales, como cuando Chris estaba mostrándoles todos esos pequeños, las pequeñas fallas que están por aquí. Esas fallas de terremoto, las que están en el océano pueden producir un tsunami. Y ese tsunami llegaría en unos 10 o 15 minutos. Así que tu advertencia va a ser el terremoto. No habrá, ya saben, alerta de emergencia en tu teléfono, no va a haber nada así. Tu advertencia es el terremoto. Así que es por eso que digo que si estás en la playa, o si vives en la playa y sientes un fuerte terremoto y esas magnitudes de terremoto son, no puedo verlo desde aquí, estamos hablando de como 7, 8, así que es realmente fuerte la emoción. Necesitas empezar a ir en el interior inmediatamente y empezar, ya saben, con tu teléfono o lo que sea, empieza a escuchar los noticias y obtener más información. Pero no esperen que alguien te alerte, solo empiece a dirigirse en el interior, ¿ok? Ahora, en la sección azul, esos son los de fuente distante de tsunamis. Y la mayoría de estos, los de distancia, hay dos fuentes. Una de ellas es la zona de abducción de Cascadia, que está arriba en Oregon y Washington. Que si tienes un terremoto allí en el 8, 9 rango, así que gran terremoto, ¿correcto? Puedes tener un tsunami que impacte esta área en unos dos horas. No malo, dos horas, pero el problema es que, ya saben, el centro de advertencia de tsunami nos enviará el mensaje. Dos horas es bastante tiempo, dependiendo de cuánto tiempo tarda en relatarlo al condado y luego a nosotros y luego nosotros sacando, pero probablemente también va a ir al comandante de watch en el departamento de la policía y empezaremos a sacar a la playa. Así que la pregunta es, si el escenario que pasó ayer, pero el terremoto que está en Alaska, si eso hubiese generado un tsunami grande lo suficiente para llegar a Malibu, ¿cuál hubiera sido el procedimiento de notificación cuando obtuvimos eso? ¿Esa es la pregunta? Ok, así que si me hubiera despertado en el medio de la noche, habría contactado a Riva. Habríamos estado en contacto con el departamento de la policía. Probablemente habíamos activado nuestro sistema de notificación de desastre. El condado está en cargo del sistema de alerta de emergencia wireless. Ya estarían, también estaríamos en contacto con ellos. Así que habría muchos llamados de teléfono en el tiempo real. Probablemente incluso solo tengamos llamadas de conferencia, como bastante rápido, como estamos hablando en tus pijamas en la oscuridad, estás haciendo esto rápido. Podríamos activar el sistema de alerta de emergencia wireless o el condado podría elegir hacerlo antes de que nos hablen. Si sienten que la amenaza es inminente lo suficiente, pueden ir adelante y hacerlo. No tienen que pedir nuestra permiso. Puede pasar de la forma que sea. Así que el condado lo hará de forma independiente si ven esta amenaza inminente o podemos solicitarlo si aún no lo han hecho. Así que podemos activar todas esas cosas. Por supuesto, el departamento de la policía probablemente enviaría a sus departamentos para empezar con los corderos y tratando de dirigir a la gente de esa área. En un punto determinado, van a tener que salir de la way porque no quieren estar en la zona de peligro. Así que tendremos algún tiempo, y si estamos hablando de Alaska, tenemos unos seis o siete horas. Así que eso es realmente bastante bueno. En seis o siete horas puedes hacer mucho. Puedes sacar a la gente, con suerte. La zona de Cascadia, por Washington, Oregon, esa es un poco más cerrada en el tiempo, porque son dos horas. Puede tomar, no sé, odio decirlo, pero tal vez media hora o más antes de que toda la información se relate y tengamos nuestro mensaje en place para empezar a empujarlo. El condado, sin embargo, podría activar el sistema WIA antes de eso, pero necesita tiempo. Veremos si está en la siguiente diapositiva, veremos si hay más. Así que básicamente en esta hoja de cinta que pueden obtener allí, muestra la fuente cercana. Hablamos de 10 a 15 minutos. Tu advertencia es el terremoto. Fuente distante, hablamos de zona de Cascadia, tienes dos horas. Si es de Alaska, tienes unos seis, siete horas. Y tu advertencia va a tener que venir a través de las noticias, las redes sociales, sistemas de alerta, cualquier cosa y todo. Solo escúchense todo lo que puedan y vamos a empujar lo más rápido que podemos también. Así que esto es solo para darles una idea de cómo funcionan estos alertas, cómo funciona el centro de advertencia de tsunami. Tienen estas bujías en el océano, así que hay como una bujía real ahí en la imagen. Y tienen todo este equipo científico. Y básicamente lo que hace es cuando un terremoto sucede, es capaz de determinar si una onda ha sido generada. Y luego mientras la onda viaja, tienen bujías por todo el océano, en el oeste, ya saben, en el océano Pacífico. Así que mientras esa onda viaja, cada vez que impacta otra bujía, está recolectando más datos. Así que mientras viaja, el centro de advertencia de tsunami está obteniendo cada vez más información para informarnos de lo que viene. En el principio, van a decir, bueno, un tsunami viene, unos seis horas. Tal vez una hora después dicen, ok, parece que la altura de la onda va a ser cuatro pies. Y tal vez una hora después pueden decir, lo estamos bajando a tres pies, o ahora pensamos que es cinco pies. Porque cada vez que pasa una bujía, está obteniendo más información y van a ajustar la información que empujan a personas como yo. Ok, así que este es un gran esfuerzo que fue realizado a través de NOAA, el Nacional Oceanic... Sé el acrónimo tan bien, me olvido de lo que en realidad se aplica hoy en día. Pero fue un gran esfuerzo para poder darnos una advertencia de tsunami mejor aquí en la costa oeste. Bien, así que volviendo a toda la idea de fuente distante y fuente local. Así que terremoto de fuente distante, lo único que queremos señalar, hay algo bueno y malo, ya sea local o lejos. Así que una fuente distante, nuestras estructuras no pueden tener tanto daño. Así que como la Falla San Andreas, si miras las proyecciones del daño causado por ella, la mayoría del daño no va a estar en Malibu. Va a ser, ya saben, si está en el sur de San Andreas, estás hablando de Orang, ya saben, como la ribería, Palm Springs, todos estos otros lugares. Malibu va a tener algunas emoción, pero no vamos a tener la emoción catastrófica que algunas de estas otras áreas tienen. Así que probablemente estemos bien, ya saben, tal vez las cosas caerán, cosas así. Algunos edificios podrían tener algunos daños minores, pero nada realmente malo. El problema, sin embargo, es nuestra infraestructura. Dependemos de infraestructura que está fuera de la ciudad de Malibu. Esa infraestructura va a ser dañada, lo que tendrá un impacto en Malibu. La infraestructura más significativa que va a afectarnos va a ser el agua. Obtuvimos nuestro agua del acueducto de California y las tuberías que traen ese agua a la California Sur, todas cruzan la Falla San Andreas. Así que si la Falla San Andreas se rompe, eso podría interferir con el agua en la área de Malibu por lo largo de seis meses. Piensen en eso. Esa es la proyección. Si tenemos la grande que hablan y rompe esas tuberías, podría ser seis meses antes de que el agua sea completamente restaurada. Esa es probablemente la cosa más grande que tenemos que planear. Si no hay nada más, planear el agua. Bien, la otra cosa sobre un tsunami de fuente distante, y estoy hablando de San Andreas realmente. Así que si tenemos esta grande en San Andreas, la otra cosa es que probablemente no obtendremos mucho ayuda aquí en Malibu porque va a haber más daño en otras áreas. Así que mientras los recursos entran, van a ir a las áreas más dañadas. Malibu puede no ver ayuda de inmediato. Esto sucedió mucho en Katrina, mucho de la ayuda fue a Nueva Orleans. Hubo otras ciudades que fueron completamente removidas de la mapa, que no vieron FEMA o a nadie durante dos semanas. Así que cuando tienes un desastre regional como ese, si no eres el punto focal, si no eres donde la mayor parte del daño está, puede que no obtengas mucho ayuda de inmediato. Así que podríamos estar un poco más por nosotros mismos. Así que si estamos hablando de terremotos de fuente distante, San Andreas es realmente lo que estoy pensando aquí. Es menos daño local, pero menos ayuda, ¿ok? Ahora, si es fuente cercana, así como las fallas locales que Chris estaba hablando, ya saben, la falla de Malibu. La buena noticia es que obtendremos más ayuda, la mala noticia es que podríamos tener más daño local. Así que esa emoción justo debajo de nuestra ciudad y la área justo alrededor del centro cívico siendo una zona de liquifacción, podríamos tener un poco más de daño estructural en Malibu. Así que es probable que tengamos moderado a severo daño a las estructuras y debido a eso también podríamos terminar con más incendios. Porque cuando tienes esa fuerte emoción, lo que pasa es que a veces las líneas de gas se rompen. Cuando se rompe una línea de gas, a veces puedes terminar con un incendio. Había, creo que fue el terremoto de Silmar, toda una vecindad fue quemada debido a una válvula de gas rota. Y piensen en esto, si un incendio empieza en un terremoto, las tuberías del agua se rompen en un terremoto. ¿Cómo combatimos el incendio? Si las tuberías del agua están rocas y no podemos obtener agua, esto va a ser un problema serio. Así que, por supuesto, los motores de incendio llevan some agua, pueden traer some agua tender, pero realmente va a comprometer su capacidad. Así que necesitamos mantener eso en nuestra mente, que un terremoto local, podríamos tener más daño estructural. Podríamos tener más peligro de incendio también. Recursos de emergencia, en los primeros días se estrecharán, pero antes de que lo sepan, vamos a tener más ayuda que sabemos hacer. No sé cuántos de ustedes vieron algunas de las fotos del incendio Thomas en la área de estación para todos los camiones de incendio en los parques en Ventura County, pero nunca han visto tantos camiones de incendio en su vida entera. Quiero decir, había cientos, si no miles. Y eso sería, si tuviéramos un terremoto local, todo iba a ser sobre Malibu. Todo el mundo va a venir y ayudarnos. Porque les digo, esos primeros respondientes, les encanta esto. Pueden practicar sus habilidades, pueden venir y ser héroes, todos vienen, ¿ok? Así que fuente cercana, más daño, pero más ayuda. Así que, ya saben, así que elige tú. No estoy segura de cuál es mejor, ya saben, depende. Bien, así que a nivel estatal, lo que están haciendo es proporcionando mucho dinero de mitigación de peligros a los gobiernos locales. Hay mitigación de peligros previas a los desastres, que los gobiernos pueden aplicar anualmente, que ahora mismo estamos actualizando nuestro plan de mitigación de peligros, que básicamente identifica los peligros y identifica proyectos que podemos implementar para reducir el impacto de un desastre. Así que ahora mismo nuestro plan está siendo actualizado. Luego también hay dinero de mitigación de peligros que obtienes cada vez que hay un desastre. Así que ahora mismo debido al incendio Thomas, con la declaración presidencial, lo que hace es que despierta el dinero de mitigación de peligros disponible a todas las jurisdicciones que están cubiertas por eso, que estamos incluidos. Y pueden aplicar dinero de mitigación de peligros. Así que ahora mismo es una de las cosas que voy a hacer, es ver si tenemos algún proyecto y ver si podemos aplicar alguno de esos fondos. Tiene un tiempo, no esperen, no piensen que viene este año. Estas cosas llevan un año o más, así que solo para que sepan, la línea federal es muy larga y lenta. Pero este es el tipo de cosa, es parte de mi trabajo, es mantener un ojo a estas oportunidades. Así que dinero de mitigación de peligros, educación pública, hacen mucho de la educación pública. Hacen mucho para apoyar a los locales también, con su sitio web. ¿Cuántos han estado en el CaliforniaReady.gov? Gran recurso de información. Y luego también coordinando con las jurisdicciones locales. Trabajamos con la ciudad en una base bastante regular. Tenemos conferencias para personas como yo, y la ciudad siempre está allí, y estamos hablando y haciendo planes. Así que estamos en comunicación con nuestros socios estatales. They also provide training to state and locals. There's a lot of training that we all have to go through, because we all want to be operating on the same page. There's something called the Standardized Emergency Management System that State of California, we all have to comply with. So the idea is that we are all managing emergencies the same way. So they do a lot of training and exercises to help all emergency managers and first responders to practice this, so that we're getting to know each other, getting to know the procedures. And then that way, in the real deal, we already know each other. We know how we're supposed to function together. And then also, if we're helping each other, we, we know how to help each other, because we all operate the same way. We manage things the same way. The other thing the state is doing is actually really cool. How many of you heard of the Earthquake Early Warning System? Anybody? Couple people? All right. Waiting for Hans' answers. Earthquake Early Warning System? All right. I'm going to show you a short video. What the Earthquake Early Warning System, in a nutshell, but I'm going to show you the video, is basically sensors that have been put out throughout the state of California. And if an earthquake starts, those sensors are going to go into a computer system, where one day, you could have an app on your phone that suddenly alarms, saying earthquake, earthquake, and tells you how many seconds you have. So let me play this video.
Five point one seconds after the magnitude six Napa earthquake, Shake Alert test users in San Francisco received warning that the strongest ground shaking would arrive in eight seconds. Vital time to get to safety.
Earthquake, earthquake, light shaking expected in two seconds.
How does Shake Alert work? And how can it be used? When an earthquake occurs, two types of seismic waves carry energy away from the hypocenter. P-waves, similar to sound waves, have a velocity of about six kilometers per second in rock. S-waves are slower at four kilometers per second, but they have larger amplitude and are generally much more damaging than P-waves. Shake Alert works by detecting P-waves arriving at seismometers closest to the earthquake, sending those signals at the speed of light to a computer system that determines earthquake location and travel times of both P and S waves to your location, then alerts you on how much time remains before potentially damaging S waves will arrive. You can drop, cover, and hold on with just a few seconds of warning. Unfortunately, if you are too close to the earthquake, you may be in a blind zone that cannot receive a warning. Shake Alert does not predict when or where an earthquake will occur. Instead, when an earthquake does occur, Shake Alert warns you how much time you have before the strongest ground shaking will arrive at your location. If the initial earthquake triggers an ongoing rupture with continuing release of seismic waves, the system recognizes that the magnitude has increased and warns that shaking will be greater than initially predicted. To more fully appreciate the importance of Shake Alert during major earthquakes, we'll examine the scenario for a hypothetical magnitude 7.8 earthquake on the southern San Andreas Fault. A similar earthquake will happen sometime in the future. We just can't predict when or where. Abrupt movement of rock across a fault starts at the hypocenter, directly below the epicenter location. This Shake Alert example is aimed to highlight the maximum warning for Los Angeles. Shake Alert subscribers closer to the hypocenter will be alerted at the same time, but will receive a shorter early warning before the nearby shaking arrives. Within seconds of the earthquake, P-waves arrive at nearby seismometers. Shake Alert estimates the magnitude as 7.0 and issues 70 seconds of warning to Los Angeles residents that S waves from the initial rupture will produce weak ground shaking. Five seconds later, the rupture, shown as the bold pink line along the San Andreas Fault, has grown dramatically, so the magnitude estimate is increased to 7.8, and the expected intensity in LA climbs to moderate. Whereas the magnitude estimate remains at 7.8, notice that the expected intensity of the largest S waves in LA continues to climb. This is because seismic energy is continually released at the rupture front that is rapidly approaching LA. Twenty-two seconds before small amplitude S waves from the initial rupture reach LA, the expected intensity of the largest S waves released by the approaching rupture is increased to strong. If we look at an oblique view of the Los Angeles basin, we can watch the waves arrive from the southeast. Four seconds before it reaches LA, the expected intensity is increased to very strong. Notice that the first S waves arriving from the initial rupture are small, but S waves released from the rupture front closer to LA arrive seconds later and produce much stronger ground shaking. Besides providing alerts to drop, cover, and hold on, Shake Alert gives time to get away from dangerous machines or chemicals, shut down gas and electric supply lines, stop rail and road traffic, halt airport takeoffs and landings, stop surgeries, and get emergency personnel ready to respond. Along with construction of earthquake-resistant buildings and infrastructure, coordinated emergency management, and public education, Earthquake Early Warning can help us achieve an earthquake-resilient society.
As you can see, that could be a huge lifesaver. Especially, you know, everything from stopping elevators. You know, it's funny, it's one of those things you don't think about, but in an earthquake, elevators, people get stuck in elevators, and we have to spend a lot of resources just getting people out of elevators. But if we can get people out of that, that's one less thing we have to do. The more we can reduce, you know, those kinds of incidences, the more we'll be able to use our resources on the real-life safety issues. Okay. So now, I'm going to hand it back to Chris to talk about this.
Thank you, Susan. What is the state doing to prepare the city of Malibu for an earthquake? And for the hazards due to an earthquake, including liquefaction and slope stability? My primary role as the consultant geologist with the city is to peer review geotectical reports for new construction throughout the city. I've been doing that since the mid-1990s. And there are two major acts that the state has passed over the past several decades that help us in identifying and mitigating these hazards here in the city of Malibu. The first one was a result of the 1971 Silmarc earthquake. It was called the Alcaspiola Earthquake Fault Zoning Act, and it was passed in 1972. And its purpose was to prevent the construction of structures for human occupancy across the traces of Holocene-active faults. And what I mean by Holocene-active is that in an investigation by a geologist, what they do is usually dig trenches across potential fault traces. And if they find the fault, there are several techniques to date the soils on either side of the fault that have been ruptured. And if it's determined that soils from 11,700 years to the present have been ruptured, that's termed a Holocene-active fault. The maps have been produced across the entire state of California and all jurisdictions, and they are obviously sent to jurisdictions and municipalities. And here in the city, we have one Alcaspiola Fault Zone. And it is shown here on the, it's a combination of the seismic hazard maps, which I'll talk about in a minute, as well as the Alcaspiola Earthquake Fault Zone map. And it's kind of hard to see. They are available on the website, which we'll give to you a little bit later. But it's this dark blue zone that runs essentially from the coast near Solstice Canyon west through Latigo Canyon. And there was an extensive study done up on a ridge above Latigo Canyon Road, early on in my career here, actually, in the early 1990s, where we had Jerry Tryman, one of the state geologists, come out and take a look at trenching in this area for new construction. And it was determined and basically clarified and substantiated that, yes, this was an active zone of faulting within the Malibu Coast Fault Zone. There are no other zones in the city of Malibu. The second act is called the Seismic Hazards Mapping Act, which was passed in 1990 as a result of the 1989 Loma Prieta earthquake. And what that does is identifies areas on each USGS quadrangle map that are prone to the effects of liquefaction, earthquake-induced landsliding, and amplified ground shaking. And again, there are quadrangle maps that cover the entire city. And quickly, the blue areas have been identified as slope areas where there could be earthquake-induced landslides. And as you can see, since the city lies at the southern edge of the Santa Monica Mountains, that whole mountain front of the Santa Monica Mountains is classified as a potential for earthquake-induced landslides. I don't have the actual city limits, but they extend beyond Point Doom out toward Leocrio, and of course, they go close to Topanga. So it's this area right here. These are just two of the maps out of the four quadrangles that cover the entire city. The one quadrangle is the Point Doom Quadrangle, and this is the main Malibu Quadrangle, which the Civic Center area is right here. So what is the city doing to prepare? Building codes and standards. The California, the state of California has the most strictest building codes for seismic standards in the country. We're all seismic zone four, and the city enforces those building codes through the city's plan checkers for all new construction. Secondly, on that list, geotectical standards. We have, we have implemented at the city a set of geotectical guidelines, most recently adopted by the city council in late 2013, which requires geotectical consultants to perform state-of-the-art and state-of-the-practice slope stability analyses and liquefaction analyses for all new habitable structures, as well as perform fault rupture hazard investigations in areas. And I think, let me see if I have that. All the way back. Let me see, I think I will, if you don't mind. Sorry for the delay here. We require fault rupture hazard investigations that are more restrictive than what the state requires, because the Alcaspiola Act actually states that single-family wood frame structures, two stories or less, do not require fault rupture hazard investigations. But the city, early on, after cityhood, in 1993, decided to be more restrictive than that. And what we use as a base map, as I mentioned earlier in our presentation, we use the Fault Evaluation Study from Jerry Tryman and the California Geological Survey in 1994 as a base map to identify areas where fault rupture hazard investigations are necessary for habitable structures. And our guideline states that if there's a fault on this map and you're within, your site is within 500 feet of that mapped fault, then you have to do that investigation. So we feel very comfortable that we're making consultants mitigate, first of all, identify, mitigate, and provide setbacks if necessary from faults if they are determined to be active. As of note, our geotectical guidelines are available on the website. You can do a search for them, and they're for all public viewing. Susan, I'll let you continue with what the city is doing as far as public education.
And you may have noticed that the, the map that he was showing with earthquake faults, those are all available out there. I made copies for people, since it's, it's hard to see, you know, the detail up on the screen here. And, and for anybody who's watching on television, all the handouts that I'm referring to, please feel free to come into City Hall to pick them up or email me. I'd be happy to send you them electronically as well. So other things the city is doing is public education. So here's, you know, a perfect example. We're doing the best we can to get the information out there. I feel very strongly that people need to understand their hazards in order to prepare, because it's the best way to motivate them, but also to make sure that people prepare effectively. Because how can you prepare if you don't know what you're preparing for? So I like to make sure everybody understands very clearly what it is that we're preparing for. Training volunteers. This would include our CERT program. How many of you are familiar with the Community Emergency Response Team program? I'll say now, we have some of our members here. Raise your hand if you've done CERT. Very good. We have a class going right now. It's going very well. We've got a full class, and we have a waiting list. We've already, are starting to fill up our spring class, which will, I'm thinking it's going to start Wednesday, April 18th. So for anyone out there listening, or out there, if you're interested in doing Community Emergency Response Team training, let me know, and I'll put you on the list. What that training includes is you have, it's a series of six classes. The first class goes over emergency preparedness. Second class goes over fire suppression. You learn a little bit about fire science. You learn how to use a fire extinguisher, hands-on, like, really using a fire extinguisher. It's great stuff. The fire department was out last week doing it for our CERT members, or CERT participants. And then you have two classes that are spent doing disaster medical. The first one is on triage. Triage is basically, what do you do if you have a whole bunch of injured people? How do you prioritize? So we teach people how to assess people and prioritize victims. The second class is about the treatment aspect of disaster medical. And then the next class after that, we do light search and rescue. So what do you do if your loved one, friend, coworker is trapped under something heavy that you can't lift? Now, I'm not talking about, like, whole walls and buildings, but something heavy. In light search and rescue class, you learn how to do some, some basic techniques using leverage so that you can safely help get people out from under things. And then the next class, we talk about terrorism and disaster psychology. I always call disaster psychology is sort of the, it's the other kind of injury, the injury you don't see. Of all the other injuries that might bleed or whatever, but disaster psychology, that's the emotional impact. So we talk about that. And then the very, after you've taken all the classes, the whole series culminates in an exercise where we simulate a disaster, and you get to practice with your classmates in putting all these skills to use. It's a lot of fun. People always really enjoy it. People do it again and again, actually. I get, you know, repeat participants, you know, it's been a few years, I want to do it again. It's really fun. It's just really good skills for even everyday life. You don't need a disaster to put these skills to use. So that's part of our training volunteers. Maintaining emergent supplies. The city actually has emergency supplies staged throughout the city. So it's part of our responsibility is making sure that those supplies stay up to date and in good condition. Training staff to respond. That's another one of my responsibilities. The, the city staff here are all disaster service workers by law, which means that we can pretty much have and do whatever we need to have done, you know? You kind of throw out the job description. Today, yeah, maybe you were a city planner yesterday, but today, you're going to be a shelter worker, because that's what we need, we're in a disaster situation. So I do a lot of training for staff. Some of it is state mandated. There are certain trainings that are required of us in order for us to be eligible for disaster reimbursement by the state and federal government. So I make sure that our primary Emergency Operations Center staff have completed all those trainings. And then we do others, training for other staff members so that they are also prepared and ready to be able to serve in this situation. We also, this year, as I mentioned in the beginning, are, this year, we're kicking off an earthquake resiliency initiative, which I'll talk a little more about, because I remember I have slides here. I always get ahead of myself. So I already talked about this. So the public education, pre- So the public education, presentations for community groups, public safety town halls like this one, CERT and community events. We'll go out to community events. We'll staff a booth, like at the concerts on the bluff, our CERT team actually was out there with information. This I already went over. Training staff, make sure our emergency supplies stay in good shape. And earthquake resiliency initiative. This actually kind of started last fall. We were contacted by the Southern California Association of Governments and Dr. Lucy Jones, her Center for Science and Society. Lucy is very passionate about resiliency and resiliency through a variety of things. And one of those ways of being resilient is making sure that you reduce your vulnerable structures. Vulnerable structures might include unreinforced masonry, which some of you may be familiar with, the old brick buildings. Luckily, I don't think we have any here in Malibu. It's still a big problem in Los Angeles. And I would just say that if you're out and about, if you happen to go into an unreinforced masonry structure, I think they're required to have a sign outside because I've seen, I've been in one. I used to work in Oxnard, and there was this really good pizza place, but it was in unreinforced masonry. And so you kind of had to read this sign as you entered, and you just hoped there wasn't an earthquake. Those are very vulnerable. There's other types of buildings that are also very vulnerable. But the one that we're concerned with here that we're going to be looking at as part of our initiative are the soft story structures. How many of you remember in the Northridge earthquake and the Northridge Meadows apartments that collapsed? And there's that famous picture with all the cars crushed. That's because that's a soft story structure with the opening, with the carports. It makes it weaker. We do have some of those here in Malibu. So we're going to do an inventory of those types of structures and see if we can come up with some incentives to try and encourage people, the building owners, to strengthen those types of structures. It will go a long way in saving them money if a big earthquake happens. It could save a life. It'll just help the city overall. So that's part of what we're going to do. But experienced adults 55 and older will be eligible for a free earthquake kit. You're going to get this rolling backpack, and it's going to be filled with supplies. And also, there's really great guys called the Disaster Recovery Guide. This is one of, like, kind of the go-to book to help you prepare and also to help you after the disaster. It doesn't matter what kind of disaster. Gives you all sorts of hints and tips on what, how to get back on your feet, what to look out for with scams and things like that. So we're going to include this book along with supplies in the backpack. These will probably start becoming available, like, I think in about a month. We were hoping to be able to give some away tonight, but we didn't get, the grant award didn't get finalized yet. But you will be hearing about this. You can look for it. So if you're an experienced adult, you are eligible to receive one. That is part of, also, part of our earthquake resiliency initiative. So there'll be a variety of things. We'll be, because along with that, you don't just walk up and get it. You're going to have to go through some training because that's one of the requirements of the grant. So we'll be doing additional training classes and presentations, and we'll use that as our lure to come get your, your free earthquake kit. So what should you do to prepare? So maybe by show hands, how many people here feel like they're, they're prepared? Very good. That's good. Our council members are prepared. We need that. So a little less than half. All right. Somebody who says they're prepared. What is it that makes you think you're prepared? All right. So someone here, repeating it for anyone on tablet, one of the people here has about a year's worth of supplies. We're not going to let you know where she lives. She's kind of a prepper, but, you know, she's definitely somebody if you're her friend or neighbor. And, oh, you have a fire truck too. Wow. Okay, I know I'm in Malibu now. All right. Well, very good. Anyone else? All right. Yeah? How about Councilmember Wagner? What do you got?
Confidence and prior training.
All right. Councilmember Wagner says he has confidence and prior training. And you know what? That actually is incredibly important. The confidence is really important for you to be able to think clearly and react appropriately and to recover psychologically. So that's a really good one, and I'm glad you brought that up. What was your second one? I forgot. What, confidence? What was the other one?
Training.
Training, yes, training. So training is huge too, and I really, really advocate this, especially with the CERT training. One of the things that training does for you, aside from being able to know what to do, it helps you with the psychological impact. There's nothing worse than being in a situation and feeling helpless. And this really came to like, to me, when I was at the Boston bombing, I just finished running the marathon, and the bombs exploded. But I just run a marathon. I couldn't even stand up. I felt so helpless. I, you know, I've been through so many disasters. I have first aid skills. I know what to do, but I couldn't do anything. I was completely helpless, and it was the first time in my life that I felt that sense of helplessness. And it was not good. It was, it was very uncomfortable. I felt very traumatized for at least a year. But it made me think, you know, that's why training is so important, because training gives you a sense of confidence, which is important, and it, it enables you to be able to do something to help. If you know what to do, you can be part of the solution. You can be part of helping. And I know that I felt, I felt horrible because I couldn't help anybody. I couldn't help myself. You know, my sister's like carrying me out. And so the training is so important because it's going to help you to feel confident, help you to know what to do, and then you won't leave that disaster situation feeling like you were not able to help, feeling useless and, and powerless, really. It's a very, it's a strong sense of powerlessness, and I don't think anybody, you know, likes that feeling. Yes?
I feel fairly well prepared to be able to communicate in our small town.
Very good. Okay, so the, for those watching on TV who couldn't hear, if you couldn't hear that, she lives in Topanga, and in Topanga, they're very organized there. They do drills, and you're probably referring to the fire evacuation drill that you do or other drills?
Government and all sorts of.
Yeah.
The Topanga Coalition.
Right.
They have grants for years now. Our, I didn't want all sorts of government agencies.
Very good. So that neighborhood organization is the key, and we're going to be trying to work on that this year, but in relation to fire. With the recent Thomas fires and everything that happened with the problems with evacuations and all of that, it's really going to be my mission this year to work with the different distinct neighborhoods that have a high, like, fire threat issue with evacuation, like, you know, Trinkis Canyon, Corral Canyon, the different areas. Working with each neighborhood because it's a neighborhood, you're kind of like a unit, and you may have unique issues for your neighborhood. So I, I do want to break it up by neighborhood so that we can focus as neighborhood areas to think about doing fire evacuation drills. Like, you know, I went to the Topanga one, and I was very impressed. I think we need to be doing that here. I know they've done one in Corral Canyon before, but I think it's just something that needs to become like an annual thing, that you just do it. It doesn't have to be super complex, but we do want to get something going. But then also looking at, you know, getting people to know each other, which also helps know who your neighbors are, who may be more vulnerable, who need extra assistance. Because I'm always asked, well, what do we do? My, my mother or my sister, they're in a wheelchair, they're going to need help. Who's going to get her out? And, you know, it really comes down to personal responsibility. If you have a mobility issue, if you love somebody who has a mobility issue, you need to make a plan for that individual. And if your plan is to work with a neighbor who hopefully can help you if you're not there, that's, that's great. But you need to figure that out. Government agencies and, you know, fire and police, when they're out doing evacuations, they'll do the best they can to find vulnerable people, but it doesn't work perfectly. That's why we always have to make sure that if you're vulnerable in that way, or if you care about someone, make sure you have a plan for that. But that comes into play when you're organizing your neighborhood in these kinds of things. You can get to know where your vulnerable neighbors are and who might need additional help. So that's coming down the way. So that whole neighborhood piece, I think, is just really, really important. So very good. So getting back to this, what should you do to prepare? The other thing that we're going to be pushing this year is eliminating non-structural hazards. These are the things that usually are hurting people here. Our buildings are built to a very high standard, but it's the non-structural things, pictures, chandeliers, facades. It's these parts of the building that are not part of the building itself. It's the things attached to the building that fall off and hurt people. Now, how many of you know that in the Napa earthquake, one person died? You know how she died? Television fell on her head. That's what we're talking about. You know, we all have these fancy large-screen TVs affixed to the wall, but who put it up? Jerry? I don't mean any offense to Jerry, but is it, is it screwed into a stud? Is it, is it fastened well? Or is it just kind of hanging on a nail put into drywall? I mean, make sure that these things, if they're heavy and they're in a location where they can fall and hurt somebody, you need to make sure that they are fastened correctly and can withstand some shaking. Same with any kind of chandeliers in the ceiling. Make sure that those chandeliers are actually attached to a stud and not just kind of screwed in, like, again, drywall or something that could break. You need to look at those things. So, and bookcases, large cabinets, anything tall that in shaking could fall over. And think of it in two ways. If it falls over, is it A, is it going to hurt somebody? B, is it going to block your exit? Okay? So you need to look around your home, eliminate non-structural hazards, securing tall furniture to the walls. It's super simple. You can get, you know, earthquake straps, you can get L brackets. It's, it doesn't cost a lot of money. It just takes the will to take a day, look around your home, and make any minor changes. You don't have to change everything. Some people go so far as to put like little baby latches on their cabinets. Okay, I personally can't stand that. So, but you make your personal choice, knowing that in your kitchen, yeah, dishes are going to fly. We all know that. So you decide if you want to maybe find some kind of a latch that maybe is a little more secure than no latch at all. But again, personal choice. You have to just think about that. All right. Insurance policies, probably one of the, the biggest parts about, that makes recovery difficult, is most people are underinsured or not insured. And earthquake insurance, I know, is not very popular. So the California Earthquake Authority has been trying to improve the policies available. So you may want to relook at it. If you've never, you know, if you looked at it years ago and you said, oh, forget about it. The deductible's too big. It's not worth it to me. You might just want to take another look at it because they, in the last year or so, they really tried to change it to make it a little more attractive to people. Because you need to understand, under a regular homeowner's insurance, earthquake, you're not going to be covered, and FEMA's not going to bail you out. What FEMA does is they'll give you a low-interest loan, but they're not going to bail you out. So just think about that. So they'll give you a low-interest loan to rebuild your home, but you still have to pay your old mortgage. Doesn't go away. So you need to look at your insurance policies, and that has to do with, you know, any kind of disaster. You know, with the recent fires, people were finding out they were underinsured on fires. Do you have wildfire insurance? Because regular homeowners, fire insurance doesn't cover wildfire. That has to be added on. So if you haven't looked at your insurance policies recently, you may just want to double-check them because this is going to go a long way in helping you to recover. Make a plan. So your plan is really usually something about, and, and just so you know, a lot of these make a plan, all that, there's tons of information I put out on the, the tables out there for you to take home if you want. Make a plan for yourself. What, what is your plan? What are you going to do? How are you going to communicate? Do you have an out-of-state contact? Sometimes the local phone systems are not working, but sometimes you can get out of state. It's a weird thing, but it's true. So do you have an out-of-state contact that all your friends and loved ones know, okay, we're all going to call Aunt Carrie in Boston? That's me, I have Aunt Carrie in Boston. So, but you, but you need to communicate that. You need to have a conversation about it. What is your plan? And if you can't be at your home, what's your plan? Are you going to go to a shelter? Most people don't. Shelters are okay if you really have to. Most people don't want to be in shelters. But usually, like in earthquake scenario, I highly advocate that if your home's damaged and you're waiting for it to be inspected and you're afraid to go inside, have some camping equipment and set up a tent in your backyard. Stay on your property. Because you can protect your property, and then you're going to be in your familiar surroundings. It's going to be a lot more comfortable than if you go to a shelter with a bunch of people and, you know, and cots. I mean, you've all seen the pictures, right? Does that look like fun? Not a lot of fun. I mean, it's, it's there if you need it, but it's better to have another kind of plan if you suddenly feel like you can't stay in your house. Or in Northridge, my aunt and uncle, they lived in Northridge. They slept on their tennis courts for two weeks, but they didn't have really good supplies. They had to go and try and find some stuff because they didn't have camping equipment. So it always kind of stuck in my head that everyone should have camping equipment in California and keep it somewhere like in an outdoor shed somewhere so that it's not stuck in the house, right? So you want to get, make a plan. What do you do? Where are you going to stay? And tell people too, what is your plan? If your plan is to, to shelter in place at your home, let people know that so they know where to find you. Because if communications are down and they're just going to try to come to your home to see if you're okay, you just need to communicate that that's your plan so they know to look for you there. But if your plan is to go to the shelter or go to the Hilton or, you know, whatever your plan is, just talk to your, your loved ones, people you care about. Getting supplies for your home and your car. Water, 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 water. As much water as you can safely store. If you have a pool, pool's great for sanitary kind of stuff, but still you're going to need drinking water. Water, fuel, making sure you don't, you know, we're all guilty of this, don't let the car get down to the last few fumes because in an earthquake, gasoline may not be available because you need power to pump the gasoline. And if there's a limited amount of gasoline, let's say the supply chain is interrupted, guess who gets the fuel first? Not you. It's going to be emergency services. When there's not a lot of fuel available, it's going to go to emergency services first. So making sure that your car is never, you know, too low on fuel. Making sure you have cash. Remember, ATMs aren't going to work if the power's out. Cash is king in a disaster. Have some emergency cash. Supplies usually, you know, there's, we have lists, and there's lots of lists everywhere of things that you need to have in a kit. But I always just encourage people, you have to think about yourself. What, what do you need? What are those things that you need in an emergency? Like, for me, I have asthma, so I have to make sure that I have inhalers in my kit. And I know sometimes with prescriptions, it could be pretty tough to get extra. They, they're pretty tight on those things, getting extra. So if you have the kind of medication where they don't give you any kind of extra, make sure you have a copy of your prescription with you, in your wallet. Take a picture with your phone, whatever it is. Because if you're separated from your, your medication and you need to get it, if you at least have a copy of your prescription, it's going to help speed up being able to get it. So again, in terms of supplies, you have to think about what are your particular needs? You know, like, I wear contact lenses, so I got to make sure I have extra glasses, a contact case, because if I get stuck here at City Hall, which could happen, you know, because it's kind of my role here. We have earthquake right now. Luckily, in my car kit, I have everything like that. Everything from, you know, comfortable clothes, change of clothes, you know, cash. I've, I've got all this stuff. I don't have any room left for my groceries in the trunk of my car, but I have supplies. So, and having supplies for your home and car, I'm, I always am pushing the car kit. The car kit is super important because your car's usually with you. I mean, definitely have supplies at your home, but we're out and about all the time, right? And you never know where you're going to be when something happens. So if you at least have stuff in your car to hold you over for a couple days, you're going to be a lot more comfortable. And I always like to give the example of when we had that big mudslide a couple years ago, was it in Tohone Pass, I think it was? Anyways, this mudslide came through, over 100 cars got stuck in the mud. They had to spend the night out there. There was a lot of people. You couldn't hike out. You couldn't do anything. They were stuck in the mud waiting for rescuers. So imagine you were driving along, a mudslide came, you're stuck in the mud. You're okay, but you can't leave. You can't hike out. It's too cold. Are you, do you have what you need in your car to be comfortable for 24, 48 hours? Think about that. Think, what do I need to have in my car so that I'm not completely miserable? I mean, you're not going to die in two days, honestly. But do you have what you need to be comfortable? Are you going to be miserable? And so that kind of can guide your car kit, and then you're always prepared, no matter where you are. Right? Attend CERT training. That's another thing I highly encourage people to do. Sign up for disaster notifications. Sign up for disaster notifications. Of course, I'm going to skip to that in a second. So, and talking to your neighbors. That kind of goes back to when we were talking about in Topanga, the neighborhoods being organized. Talking to your neighbors, finding out who they are, talking about what your plans are, and finding out if you have any vulnerable neighbors. And also just finding out if you have neighbors with, like, special skills. You know, find out, oh, you're a nurse. I didn't know you were a nurse. You know, because you never know. In a disaster, if someone's hurt, and you're like, oh, yeah, I remember, the neighbor over there is a nurse. Or, you know, whatever it is. Or maybe someone who's good at construction and could have a good eye for looking at damage to saying, yeah, that looks like it's okay. We could probably go in and get that person. So just kind of knowing who the people are in your neighborhood, what kind of skills they might have, any kind of, you know, if they may need some extra help. Just being aware of who they are. But in terms of signing up for disaster notifications, the city has two levels. The one that we use on almost a daily, probably daily basis or more, is the Malibu Alert System. This is just for low-level stuff, emergencies. Like, if you can sign up for different things. An emergency alert through this system isn't like imminent threat. This is like during Skirball Fire. The Skirball Fire was not in Malibu. It was not an immediate threat to Malibu. We were monitoring it. But we put out some messages through the emergency, this system, to let people know that currently, you know, it's not in Malibu. We're monitoring, stay tuned kind of thing. So that's the kind of level of, of an alert you would get through this system. You can also get traffic alerts. You can get weather emergencies. So red flag warning through the weather alert. We'll put out red flag warning. So that's what this system is. The one we really want people to be engaged with though is right here. This is our disaster notification system. It's run through a system called Everbridge. People usually call it reverse 911, even though the city has never had reverse 911. Most cities, a lot of cities haven't had reverse 911, but it, that was one of the first companies that came out. So it just kind of caught on, like Kleenex tissue, you know? It's, so reverse 911 is a vendor, but they're all telephonic notification systems. And so our system is through Everbridge. And this is the one we will use if there is an immediate life safety imminent threat. So we're talking about fires coming. You have to evacuate, mandatory evacuation. Or let's say a hazardous substance. Somebody had some illegal chemicals. It exploded, and there's a plume coming. That's another, we would use this system for that to tell you to close your windows, stay inside, shelter in place. That's what this system's for. Because what you're seeing up here is just kind of our map. All those little dots are showing you contacts we have. This system comes with all the Verizon landlines. We get those with the system. What we do not have is your cell phones. You must register your cellphone if you want to receive alert on your cellphone. These days, less than half of all people even have a landline plugged in. They may have a landline, but they don't have a phone plugged into it. So we're actually going to be doing a test of this system on February 7th at 7:00. We're going to, all those dots are contacts that we have currently. We have about 20, was it 27,000 landlines? Was it 27? And then we have about 1,700 cell phones. Okay, 1,700 cell phones out of almost 13,000 people. How many cell phones do you think really are in Malibu? Probably about 15,000, right? Not every, because some people have two cell phones. So we need to get a lot more cell phones in here if you figure that on average, only half people are even using their landlines. So we know we do not have full coverage. But we're going to run a test, partly to see on the landlines, how many of those are actually connecting to people? Because when we run the test, all, all it's going to be, it's going to be very simple. If you, if you have a landline, your phone's going to ring, and it will know that you picked up. And so we'll, we'll get a, it'll say connected or something like that. If it comes on your cellphone and say, if you receive, press 1. So there'll be some way to confirm that you received it. And we'll be able to see how many landlines went nowhere. And that's what we want to see. Because we want to see how far is our reach? Because if, how many of you have read the articles after Thomas Fire, at Montecito? And people said, I never got an alert. Well, there's a lot of different reasons. But one of the reasons is not everybody had their cellphone registered. That was one of the issues in Ventura. They didn't have a very high number of people register with their cellphone. So they didn't receive the alert. Now, mind you, this is not the only system we will use to alert people, but it is one of our primary ones. It's one of the easier ones that we have. We can also access the wireless alert system I spoke about earlier. That one's a little different. Because in this system, what happens is if, let's say in a fire, and a fire's coming, there's a particular neighborhood that needs to be evacuated, we go into the map, and that's like just a screenshot of the map, and we'll draw a little polygon around the neighborhood that needs to be evacuated. And then the message just goes to those people. That's important because, as we know, a lot of the roads in Malibu, they're one way in, one way out, right? You don't want everybody and their brother suddenly on the road. We need to focus on the people who absolutely need to get out so that we don't overcrowd the roads with people evacuating when they don't need to. So that's what's good about this system. In the WEAS system, the Wireless Emergency Alert System, that's like Amber Alert, that one works differently. That works on cellphone towers. So it's going to target a cellphone tower, and that message is going to be blasted to anybody that's in with, in reception range of that tower. So that's, you're going to get a lot more people than you need. So that's why in some of the articles you might have heard about where people, where Santa Barbara was criticized for not using that system, they were scared that they would get too many on, people on the road unnecessarily.[1548.38]